We'll call Scottsboro City Council meeting Monday, September 23rd. Order of the indication given by Greg Mashburn and the pledge allegiance given by Mr. Mayor.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this, for this day, Lord. We thank you for all the wonderful blessings. Lord, we thank you for most of our protection of the city and for all our employees, the city, fire department, police department. And dear heavenly fathers, as we go through this next week, we ask you to watch over and care for us and everything we do. We guide and direct us as we do this council meeting. We will be complying according to your will all this way as we now aim for our service.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Richard Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Fred Mashburn?
Here.
Mr. Gary Stewart?
Here.
Mr. Mont Ashburn?
Here.
Mr. Patrick Stewart?
Here.
We'll go to the adoption of the agenda, but before we do that, I'd like to add, item thirteen, we will be in executive session. Item thirteen, we in executive session. So that being said, and also, under old business, there will be a presentation, so we'll, uh, that's where. So that being said, do I have a motion to approve of it?
I'm not going to vote.
That's second.
Second.
Any discussion? Not a vote on Thursday?
Aye.
Thursday night. But approval of previous minutes from September 9th, 2019, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Any second. What is that? Any discussion? Not a vote on Thursday?
Aye.
Thursday night. We'll go down to old business, which is the presentation.
This is life, would you please come forward? Can you just stop? We were going to talk about street paving.
I've been worried about that.
Uh, we've got a little something for you since you're going to be going down the easy road. This is a proclamation. I'm not going to read all the details, but also a key to the city. It says, "The key to the city presents a royal life of thirty years' service to the citizens of Scottsboro as a dedicated leader with the Scottsboro Water, Sewer, and Gas Board, September 23rd, 2019."
Thank you.
Congratulations, sir. Well deserved.
Very well served.
Roy, could you hold that up? Could you hold that up, please, sir?
Sure, sure.
Thank you, sir.
Get up there.
Yeah, yeah. They got, they got the terms out of it?
No.
All right, word.
Don't move.
Don't move.
Thank you.
One more.
Well deserved.
All right, one more. One, two, three.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Green.
We'll go to new business. First item is consider resolution to order the red carpet paving bid. It's recommended by the bid review committee that the bid be rejected and negotiated for a lower price. I think that's been done, but we can't back on it to vote on this. For that being said, do I have a motion to, uh, reject the bid, negotiate a lower price? I'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Last second.
Check.
Any discussion? Not a vote on Thursday?
Aye.
Thursday night. Item number two, uh, consider resolution to award the fuel bid. It's recommended by the bid review committee that the bid be awarded to Valley Oil Company at Chattanooga, Tennessee, as the lowest responsible bidder in that specifications. Do I have a motion to approve Anders Fuel Company?
I'll make that motion.
That's second.
Second.
Any discussion? Not a vote on Thursday? Aye. Thursday night. Item number three, resolution to award the fuel bid. It's recommended by the bid review committee that the bid be awarded to Valley Oil Company at Chattanooga, Tennessee, as the lowest responsible bidder in that specifications. Do I have a motion to award the fuel bid?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we table this. If there's any discussion.
My second. So I have a motion to table this in a second. Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote on tabling this fuel bid on Thursday?
Aye.
Thursday night. Item number four, consider resolution to award the oil bid. It's recommended by the bid review committee that the bid be awarded to the McPherson Companies as the lowest responsible bidder in that specifications. Do I have a motion to approve McPherson Companies as the lowest responsible bidder?
I'll make that motion.
That's second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Not a vote on Thursday? Aye.
Thursday night. Item number five, consider resolution to award the recycling facility bid. It's, uh, recommended by the bid review committee that the bid be awarded to PNC Construction Incorporated at Chattanooga, Tennessee, as the lowest responsible bidder in that specifications. Do I have a motion to approve PNC Construction Incorporated?
I'll make that motion.
That's second.
Second.
Any discussion? Not a vote on Thursday? Aye. Thursday night. Item number six, consider a budget amendment for street paving, paving?
If I may?
Yes, please.
All right. Last week I presented the, these five streets, uh, which totaled 263,000. Uh, since then, we've gotten a firmer quote on Brown Street, which took that down from 263 to 251,619. Uh, there's two service road accesses on the Highway 72 that we had been looking at and, uh, in discussions with, with some of the tenants there, and you'll see these two listed, uh, which totaled 34,320. We would like to have that work performed by Wiregrass when they complete next month, the service road, that would be in the area. We've gotten a quote to do that. And then the last grouping you see, uh, we had talked about that quite some time this year about redoing the parking lots at, uh, Bynum Park, the softball side. Uh, that would be done by, uh, a different party. We've gotten quotes on that. Uh, we probably would not do the entirety of the 52,000 now. We'd probably end up doing one parking lot because we've got to do some extensive work to want the ditches and remove that lifetime fence and also, uh, that was the quotes to fix that.
So does Wiregrass already have a bid?
Yes. The, the Bynum Park was, since it was involved more attaching than anything with C and C, which did the work at the cemetery and was excellent, but that we would just have to, we're still trying to solidify some numbers on that based on the different parts of the project.
So this money is it coming out of that, that bond that we're talking about?
Well, I've got down here, just showing you that million dollars that we did for the Parks Avenue Bridge. You can see down there the project total was 653. If we did everything on this list, we would be at 991,000, but we're proposing that, that these street pavings and, and work come out of the bond.
What would be the grand total on these five streets plus the ball field on?
Uh, well, that comes to 280, about 286,000. I don't have a calculator, it's in my hand. Be less than 290,000.
So what? I'm sorry, I was trying to find all my, all my documents up here. So what's the total that we're looking at?
Right now, we could do the, the two accesses on the Highway 72 in those five streets and it would not exceed 290,000. Got Beach, Forest Dean, David Brown, and then the two accesses.
It's, the total's 285,939.
Okay. We don't have any information on what Wiregrass, we haven't got all the booths.
It's four.
Well, they're scheduled to do, uh, parks first week in October, and they would do Beach at the same time, and then they would hopefully just follow that in to these others in the next four to six weeks. And then we know that they would do the, the two points up here on 72 when they do that, that project.
So the, so the bridge, only open October 1st?
And I didn't say that. The problem with allowing traffic right now is we've got about a four to five inch drop from the asphalt to the gravel, and we've been wetting it trying, since we've had no rain trying to get it compacted.
So this is coming out of bond, bond issue?
Yes. Or it could come out of surplus sales tax.
All right, so do I have a motion to consider a budget amendment for street paving for 285,939?
I'll make that motion.
That's second.
Second.
Discussion?
Wouldn't there be some discussion about it coming out of that money we're going to get back to refinance and that?
Yes.
That, that is what it will. There's capital projects. Either, either bond issue or big capital projects. Where else would you, I mean, we didn't have a timeframe on that, did we, as far as giving that money back from? Uh, by the end of the year.
So we're taking it out of the bond, taking it out of bond issue?
Four and a half billion out of bond issue, the current bond issue.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Not a vote on Thursday?
Aye.
Thursday night. Consider budget amendment for the solid waste department? Mayor, do you have?
Uh, you've got the quote, uh, as we talked about in the work session, this would be to go ahead and get on order two more knuckle booms with a March or April delivery date. Uh, be the exact same truck as what we've got on order now. It's 150,314, and sub about $8,000 from us free.
But that's number nine. I didn't, we don't allow that team to have anything.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Probably.
I don't have anything for number eight.
Eight was to repair the compactor, that's 40,000.
Yeah, we were going, we talked about setting that out of the sales tax, I'm sorry, later.
Down to an eighth back.
That was 40,000, and we talked about it, uh, when we did the solid waste budget.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
No, no total.
Total. Yeah, that's, that's got to be.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I'm sorry. Jumped ahead.
All right, so do I have a, consider a budget amendment for the solid waste department for $5,000?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
That'll come out of sales tax.
Right.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Not a vote on Thursday? Aye. Thursday night. Now we go to number nine, uh, consider a budget amendment to purchase the knuckle booms.
I forgot on previous discussion, Lord, how we're going to fight this. We, that's that out of bond issued, uh, refinanced, that we get back in January.
The money to actually refinance?
Yeah. That would be 300,000.
So these aren't going to be ordered until?
Well, we would, go ahead, now, sir, we'd go ahead and get them on order this week, but it's not a delivery until March or April. These would be a purchase instead of five months.
So we're looking at two of them?
Yes, sir.
At 150,340 each. So do I have a motion to approve 300,628 dollars for the purchase of knuckle booms coming out of that refund of bond issue refinanced?
I'll make that motion.
That's second.
Second.
Any discussion?
That'll come out of sales tax.
Right. Yes. Any other discussion?
Not a vote on Thursday? Aye.
Thursday night. Now we go to number nine, uh, consider a budget amendment to purchase the knuckle booms.
I forgot on previous discussion, Lord, how we're going to fight this. We, that's that out of bond issued, uh, refinanced, that we get back in January.
The money to actually refinance?
Yeah. That would be 300,000.
So these aren't going to be ordered until?
Well, we would, go ahead, now, sir, we'd go ahead and get them on order this week, but it's not a delivery until March or April. These would be a purchase instead of five months.
So we're looking at two of them?
Yes, sir.
At 150,340 each. So do I have a motion to approve 300,628 dollars for the purchase of knuckle booms coming out of that refund of bond issue refinanced?
I'll make that motion.
That's second.
Second.
Any discussion?
That'll come out of sales tax.
Right. Yes. Any other discussion? Not a vote on Thursday? Aye. Thursday night. Item number ten, consider revised job description for the police department. Chief, you want to do it?
Sure.
So with that, you want to do it?
Uh, basically, what we wanted to do is, uh, update our job descriptions within the police department. The changes really consisted of, uh, subtle changes in words or phrases that would allow the police department to promote the most qualified candidates from internal and external resources. Presently, the Auburn, uh, design job description conflict with the Scottsboro Police Department's policy and procedure, as well as past practices when it, in regards to promotions. Some of the words that caused the problem were like, uh, one job description in particular is lieutenant dash patrol. So if we were to have an opening, you know, captain slot for promotion, then we could only use a lieutenant from patrol for that. So that's all we're trying to rectify. And some other changes were, it's not a Scottsboro police officer, it's law enforcement officer. And the reason why we did that is so, especially these days and times, we could reach out to other, uh, like retired troopers, uh, county personnel, and we'd like to funnel over to the police department during hiring process.
There've always been problems with this office system.
And the only thing we would have left to change in our policy and procedure manual
is, uh, we also have Scottsboro Police Department officers, and we'd like to change that to a law enforcement officer, uh, broaden our selection process.
We stay right there until we get the motions, and if there's anything else that needs to be asked, and a good motion.
Sure.
Thanks. So, lads, I'll have a motion to consider revised job descriptions for the police department.
I'll make that motion.
That's second.
Second.
Any discussion? Not a vote on Thursday? Aye. Thursday night. Item number ten. I'm sorry. Go down to number eleven. Announce the downtown redevelopment authority appointment. Zone one appointment, uh, two applicants, uh, Needa Oliver and Patrick Coonsley. So I have a nomination for, for this downtown redevelopment board.
I'd like to nominate Needa Oliver.
That's second. Any other nominations? Not a plus nominations, we have Needa Oliver nominated, do I have a motion to approve Needa Oliver?
I'll make that motion.
That's second. Any discussion? Not a vote on Thursday? Aye. Thursday night. Item number five, consider a resolution to award the recycling facility bid. It's, uh, recommended by the bid review committee that the bid be awarded to PNC Construction Incorporated at Chattanooga, Tennessee, as the lowest responsible bidder in that specifications. Do I have a motion to approve PNC Construction Incorporated?
I'll make that motion.
That's second.
Second.
Any discussion? Not a vote on Thursday? Aye. Thursday night. Item number five, consider a resolution to award the recycling facility bid. It's, uh, recommended by the bid review committee that the bid be awarded to PNC Construction Incorporated at Chattanooga, Tennessee, as the lowest responsible bidder in that specifications. Do I have a motion to approve PNC Construction Incorporated?
I'll make that motion.
That's second.
Second.
Any discussion? Not a vote on Thursday? Aye. Thursday night. Item number four, consider a resolution to award the oil bid. It's, uh, recommended by the bid review committee that the bid be awarded to PNC Construction Incorporated at Chattanooga, Tennessee, as the lowest responsible bidder in that specifications. Do I have a motion to approve PNC Construction Incorporated?
I'll make that motion.
That's second.
Second.
Any discussion? Not a vote on Thursday? Aye. Thursday night. Item number five, consider a resolution to award the recycling facility bid. It's, uh, recommended by the bid review committee that the bid be awarded to PNC Construction Incorporated at Chattanooga, Tennessee, as the lowest responsible bidder in that specifications. Do I have a motion to approve PNC Construction Incorporated?
I'll make that motion.
That's second.
Second.
Any discussion? Not a vote on Thursday? Aye. Thursday night. Item number five, consider a resolution to award the recycling facility bid. It's, uh, recommended by the bid review committee that the bid be awarded to PNC Construction Incorporated at Chattanooga, Tennessee, as the lowest responsible bidder in that specifications. Do I have a motion to approve PNC Construction Incorporated?
I'll make that motion.
That's second.
Second.
Any discussion?
That'll come out of sales tax.
Right. Yes. Any other discussion? Not a vote on Thursday? Aye. Thursday night. Item number five, consider a budget amendment for the solid waste department. Mayor, do you have?
Uh, you've got the quote, uh, as we talked about in the work session, this would be to go ahead and get on order two more knuckle booms with a March or April delivery date. Uh, be the exact same truck as what we've got on order now. It's 150,314, and sub about $8,000 from us free.
But that's number nine. I didn't, we don't allow that team to have anything.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Probably.
I don't have anything for number eight.
Eight was to repair the compactor, that's 40,000.
Yeah, we were going, we talked about setting that out of the sales tax, I'm sorry, later.
Down to an eighth back.
That was 40,000, and we talked about it, uh, when we did the solid waste budget.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
No, no total.
Total.
Yeah, that's, that's got to be.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I'm sorry. Jumped ahead.
All right, so do I have a, consider a budget amendment for the solid waste department for $5,000?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
That'll come out of sales tax.
Right. Yes.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Not a vote on Thursday? Aye. Thursday night. Now we go to number nine, uh, consider a budget amendment to purchase the knuckle booms.
I forgot on previous discussion, Lord, how we're going to fight this. We, that's that out of bond issued, uh, refinanced, that we get back in January.
The money to actually refinance?
Yeah. That would be 300,000.
So these aren't going to be ordered until?
Well, we would, go ahead, now, sir, we'd go ahead and get them on order this week, but it's not a delivery until March or April. These would be a purchase instead of five months.
So we're looking at two of them?
Yes, sir.
At 150,340 each. So do I have a motion to approve 300,628 dollars for the purchase of knuckle booms coming out of that refund of bond issue refinanced?
I'll make that motion.
That's second.
Second.
Any discussion? Not a vote on Thursday? Aye. Thursday night. Item number ten, consider a revised job description for the police department. Chief, you want to do it?
Sure.
So with that, you want to do it?
Uh, basically, what we wanted to do is, uh, update our job descriptions within the police department. And the changes really consisted of, uh, subtle changes in words or phrases that would allow the police department to promote the most qualified candidates from internal and external resources. Presently, the Auburn, uh, design job description conflict with the Scottsboro Police Department's policy and procedure, as well as past practices when it, in regards to promotions. Uh, some of the words that caused the problem were like, uh, one job description in particular is lieutenant dash patrol. So if we were to have an opening, you know, captain slot for promotion, then we could only use a lieutenant from patrol for that. So that's all we're trying to rectify. And some other changes were, it's not a Scottsboro police officer, it's law enforcement officer. And the reason why we did that is so, especially these days and times, we could reach out to other, uh, like retired troopers, uh, county personnel, and we'd like to funnel over to the police department during hiring process.
There've always been problems with this office system.
Sir.
And the only thing we would have left to change in our policy and procedure manual is, uh, we also have Scottsboro Police Department officers, and we'd like to change that to a law enforcement officer, uh, broaden our selection process.
We stay right there until we get the, the motions, and if there's anything else that needs to be asked, and a good motion.
Sure.
Thanks. So, lads, I'll have a motion to consider revised job descriptions for the police department.
I'll make that motion.
That's second.
Second.
Any discussion? Not a vote on Thursday? Aye. Thursday night. Item number ten. I'm sorry. Go down to number eleven. Announce the downtown redevelopment authority appointment. There's only one appointment, uh, two applicants, uh, Needa Oliver and Patrick Coonsley. So I have a nomination for, for this downtown redevelopment board.
I'd like to nominate Needa Oliver.
That's second. Any other nominations? Not a plus nominations, we have Needa Oliver nominated, do I have a motion to approve Needa Oliver?
I'll make that motion.
That's second. Any discussion? Not a vote on Thursday? Aye. Thursday night. Item number five, consider a resolution to award the recycling facility bid. It's, uh, recommended by the bid review committee that the bid be awarded to PNC Construction Incorporated at Chattanooga, Tennessee, as the lowest responsible bidder in that specifications. Do I have a motion to approve PNC Construction Incorporated?
I'll make that motion.
That's second.
Second.
Any discussion?
That'll come out of sales tax.
Right. Yes.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Not a vote on Thursday? Aye. Thursday night. Now we go to number nine, uh, consider a budget amendment to purchase the knuckle booms.
I forgot on previous discussion, Lord, how we're going to fight this. We, that's that out of bond issued, uh, refinanced, that we get back in January.
The money to actually refinance?
Yeah. That would be 300,000.
So these aren't going to be ordered until?
Well, we would, go ahead, now, sir, we'd go ahead and get them on order this week, but it's not a delivery until March or April. These would be a purchase instead of five months.
So we're looking at two of them?
Yes, sir.
At 150,340 each. So do I have a motion to approve 300,628 dollars for the purchase of knuckle booms coming out of that refund of bond issue refinanced?
I'll make that motion.
That's second.
Second.
Any discussion? Not a vote on Thursday? Aye. Thursday night. Item number ten, consider a revised job description for the police department. Chief, you want to do it?
Sure.
So with that, you want to do it?
Uh, basically, what we wanted to do is, uh, update our job descriptions within the police department. And the changes really consisted of, uh, subtle changes in words or phrases that would allow the police department to promote the most qualified candidates from internal and external resources. Presently, the Auburn, uh, design job description conflict with the Scottsboro Police Department's policy and procedure, as well as past practices when it, in regards to promotions. Uh, some of the words that caused the problem were like, uh, one job description in particular is lieutenant dash patrol. So if we were to have an opening, you know, captain slot for promotion, then we could only use a lieutenant from patrol for that. So that's all we're trying to rectify. And some other changes were, it's not a Scottsboro police officer, it's law enforcement officer. And the reason why we did that is so, especially these days and times, we could reach out to other, uh, like retired troopers, uh, county personnel, and we'd like to funnel over to the police department during hiring process.